Since we're still in tears, that will advance to orange. We think that that's what's going to happen. So that's, that's good news. So for our board meeting tonight, public comment will be held um for three minutes. The board shall limit the total number of or time for public comment for each agenda item for twenty minutes. But with board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. And that a regular board meeting shall be adjourned by ten thirty. And there is discretion uh from our board in in uh with our leadership of our board president as well. Uh we do accept email public comment and we do not have email public comment tonight. We do have time, we do have a teleconference, a public comment as an option and will ask that community members who would like to make public comment that they use the raised hand icon to make public comment for items on the agenda. A meeting facilitator will announce your name when it's your turn to provide public comment. Uh will at we will then unmute and then we ask that you please state your name and indicate the agenda topic you're commenting upon. Also, uh board members for action items will be participating after the motion with a roll call vote or our part our community members who may be only joining us by phone tonight, so they know um how each of you voted as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shower. Uh moving on to the next item, communication, item one Sacramento County Office of Education twenty 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 one. Second period interim report.
Yes. So again, this, this is a routine uh communication that we do receive from the Sacramento County Office of Education Superintendent Dave Gordon concerning our second interim report. There are some areas that are pointed out. One of them what actually would be tied to the demographics report that you'll hear later tonight does uh communicate for us to think about the projection of a decrease of two hundred and thirty-one students or ADA in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three school year. I'd like to also point out that um Mr. Gordon was was stating that as we're working with our our unions, if we do have agreements that have salary and benefit negotiations that there is a process with the county office, which we will talk through later on, that we have been doing when we do have compensation uh coming into play. What is uh what I'd like to also clarify, there are some notes about additional budget reductions that have taken place and deficit spending. And what I'd like to clarify is that there are literally millions of dollars that are not reflected in the second interim based on federal funding that we had not received and that we will be receiving. So this information, um you know, is a bit different than what you're reading right now. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, on item F reports. And we have. First report is LCAP goal three, uh item one, join me in elementary school district and calc school survey report and analysis.
Great. Okay, and I uh we're President Silva. I will start and then I'm going to introduce. Uh we have Dr. Leslie Pointer, who uh most of you met um over a year ago. That is going to join us tonight. And before I set the stage here, Mrs. Fox is Mrs. Pointer, Dr. Pointer. All right, for Dr. Pointer. Yeah, yeah. And if I, if I could share this, that we have been working on what two goals would look like for our multi-year strategic plan. There are two goals. The first one is to engage learners through a focus on equity, access, and academic rigor with inclusive practices in a variety of environments. The second one is promoting whole learner development through social and emotional learning opportunities in a variety of environments. So we're in the process right now of some very, very critical planning work. We've been getting feedback. We've been looking at data. Last school year, our board uh decided that we, the calc school survey could give us a more comprehensive research or research-based survey to use in our school system. And so uh with that, we move forward to to administer it this year and use it as a source of data to either affirm where we are striving to go um or also food for thought and some maybe some adjustments to make as well. So Dr. Leslie Pointer is joining us tonight. She is going to uh share some information about the calc school survey and then uh you'll have an opportunity to um ask questions. And then following that presentation, we're going to move into the LCAP and make some connections with calc schools also. So, uh Dr. Leslie Pointer, there you are. So good to see you.
See you. Hello, everyone. Um I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, thank you for inviting me back. I am delighted to be here again, um here in the virtual world. But um so um I'm gonna just give you a little overview and then give you an opportunity to ask questions if 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 that works for everybody. And um please just sing out if uh if it doesn't work or if you want to stop me as we go along. It's really hard. Um once I'm in full screen, I don't see your faces, so I can't read body language and I can't tell if uh you're waving at me or rolling your eyes or anything else. So you'll just have to use your voice. So here we go. Um I'm gonna share with you some of your results. But first, I just want to give a really brief reminder about why this survey is important, what it measures. And then I'm gonna talk about the two goals that Dr. Shower just mentioned and your data on that. So moving on, um just a reminder about why the calc school survey is important. And it's because we know the context in which kids learn is important. So what helps learning? And children are less likely, students are less likely, adults are less likely to be able to learn if they are hungry, angry, lonely, tired, or scared. And the calc school survey data gives you information about the context in which kids are coming from and the context that's happening at school when once kids are in school. And of course, this year is a little strange because kids weren't in physical school. So what about this survey data is important? And it helps us identify the strengths and needs of a positive school climate. So um we, we've known this for a really long time. But if kids, humans do not feel physically, biologically safe, they're not going to be able to learn. So that's why school safety is so important. If human beings don't feel connected to schools um to each other, we're social animals and we've certainly seen that play out over this past fourteen months. But without that connection, students aren't as able to learn. And then, but once those two areas are satisfied, then um kids are going to be able to engage in learning. And so I heard this on a podcast and I don't know where I heard it, so I can't attribute it. And I've taken it and just expanded it in my own way anyway. But think about it like this. Imagine that you are one of those people that really loves algebraic equations. You love it so much that you're walking down the street and in your mind, you're thinking about this algebraic equation, something that you're wrestling with and struggling with and you really want to understand. And as you're walking, thinking about this thing that you really, really have to concentrate on, somebody jumps out in front of you with with a weapon. The moment that happens, you are going to go right back into this fight, flight, or freeze state. Do you need to fight this person with a weapon? Do you need to run from this person with a weapon? Do you need to hide? Do you need to freeze and hide from this person with a weapon? But what you're not going to be doing is thinking about those algebraic equations. So then let's think about it this way. So you are in a room with a bunch of other people and you're all there to wrestle with algebraic equations because that's what you all love to do. It's something meaningful to you, something you want to engage in, you like the puzzle of it. And you're doing that and having a great time doing it, but then there's a group over in the corner and you notice that they're pointing at you and laughing at you and making fun of you for the way you walk, for the way you talk, or for the way you dress, or the what you eat. In that moment, you're going to feel this hot flush over you of shame and embarrassment. And you're going to feel disconnected and isolated. And when that happens, what you're not going to be doing is thinking about your algebraic equations. That is true for adults and it's true for kids. So this data is important because it tells us how we're doing in creating the conditions that students can learn in. So when we think about multi-tiered systems of support, what we want to do is we want at least eighty percent of our kids to be served by the systems we put in place. So what we're looking at is if at least eighty percent of our kids say they feel safe at school, then we know our systems are strong, are robust, are successful. If we have at least eighty percent of our kids saying that they feel connected to people at school, then we know the systems that we have put in place are strong, robust, and effective. And then the same for school engagement. If kids say they are engaged, then uh and they demonstrate that and it's at least eighty percent of our kids, then our systems are working the way we want them to. And once we have our systems in place, that frees up time, effort, energy, money to to give the extra support to the kids that need them. Um and that would be that fifteen percent that might need some targeted support, so that five percent intensive support. So what does this look like when we look at the data? This is uh pre-pandemic data and we're looking at safety. And when we look at safety that in this, in this is statewide data, this is not your data. We will get to your data in a second. But statewide data from pre-pandemic twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, when kids said they um had experienced any harassment or bullying, look at the difference when they also said they had caring relationships with adults at school. The kids that said they had caring relationships with adults at school were less likely to report having experienced harassment or bullying. So that's a safety issue. Let's take a look at um mental health and social emotional well-being. When we look at the pre-pandemic data, when kids say that they experience chronic sadness, this is statewide data, pre-pandemic, they are less likely to say that they've experienced chronic sadness two weeks or more of not being able to do the things they love to do when they have caring adult relationships. So what I mean by caring adult relationships is that these kids are saying that they have at at least one adult at school who really cares about them, who listens to them when they have something to say, and who notices when they are not there. Kids that can say that that is pretty much true or very much true are much less likely to report being sad for two or more weeks. The same is true when we get into the upper grades. Again, statewide data much less likely to say that they have suicide ideation if they have caring adult relationships with at least one adult at school. And then recently, we've been looking at the social emotional um learning skill of or trait of optimism. And just as they, the previous two uh graphs show, there are kids that have caring adult relationships with an adult at school are less likely to feel sad, less likely to consider suicide. They are more likely to feel optimistic about their life. And again, all of this is pre-pandemic data. We're still collecting um the data from the pandemic year. So that that was the mental health, social emotional. So I just backing up one second. I just want to show you that what we're looking at is the same hierarchy, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Physical safety, then social emotional connectedness, and now motivation, academic motivation and by caring relationships. And this is something that I think is striking from pre-pandemic data. When we look at kids who say that they have caring relationships, they with an adult at school, so one adult at school who really cares about them, notices when they're not there and listens to them when they have something to say, they are much more likely to re- to say that they um feel academically motivated. And what am, what do I mean by academically motivated? It is, I try hard to make sure that I'm good at my schoolwork. I try hard at school because I'm interested in my work. I work hard to try to understand things at school. I'm always trying to do better in my schoolwork. So kids that have at least one adult who really cares about them, listens to them, and notices when they're not there, they are more likely to agree or strongly agree that they feel academically motivated. And when we look at this, remember I was saying earlier that we want at least eighty percent of our kids to say that they feel academically motivated? When kids have caring relationships, we are so close. In seventh grade, this is again statewide, eighty-two percent of our kids feel academically motivated. Seventy-nine percent of our ninth graders feel academically motivated and seventy-six percent of our eleventh graders. Imagine if every kid had at least one adult that really cared about them from their perspective. I want to be very clear here. I'm not saying that there aren't adults that care about kids. It's do the kids recognize that? So if every kid could name one adult that really cares about them, we would likely see us reaching, having really strong academic motivation. So let's get to your two goals that Dr. Shower just mentioned. So so here they are. And now I want to take a look at your data related to that. The first thing I want to look at is chronic sadness because this is something that you looked at in the past and it is something that is um that you probably want to going to want to consider going forward. So last year, what when we asked if kids were feeling sad for two or more weeks, um that they didn't do any of their usual activities, the results were fifteen percent in fifth grade, twenty-four percent in sixth grade, twenty-six percent seventh, thirty-two percent in eighth. So now I had talked about that eighty percent. Obviously, if we don't, our goal isn't eighty percent. Actually, our goal is zero percent of kids feeling um chronic sadness. But if we're looking at it from a systems perspective, the fact that fifteen percent of our fifth graders feel chronic sadness means that the systems we have in place are functioning the way we would like them to because eighty-five percent of our kids in fifth grade do not feel chronic sadness. So that means we can target this fifteen percent of kids in fifth grade and provide them the targeted and intensive support that they might need. Um sixth grade, there's a little room for growth here because we're, we're at twenty-four percent. So that means we're not quite reaching that eighty percent of kids who do not have chronic sadness. Um and then the same is true for seventh and eighth grade. This is from last year's data. And then um one thing I want to say, when last year when we asked staff, only twenty-two percent of staff uh said that they felt like depression was a problem. And that's pretty consistent if, you know, overall with what the kids say. Now, this year, which is a pandemic year, let's look at the numbers. One of the things that um, one of the things that's interesting is that in sixth grade, the number, the percentage of kids who felt chronic sadness actually dropped. I don't have an explanation for that. It would be something to be interested in. But uh and I, it went up just a little bit in fifth grade. But still, it's under that twenty percent, which is what we're hoping for when we're looking at our systems. Now, the next thing when that's, and that's for your fifth and sixth grade, for your seventh and eighth graders, the fact that your chronic sadness numbers jumped up so dramatically, yes, it is of concern. However, I just want to caution you a little bit here because um this is consistent with the data that we're seeing across the state. The numbers of chronic sadness, the percentage of students, especially in grade seven and above, experiencing chronic sadness is right around here. In fact, it's a, your eighth grade is probably a little bit lower than what we've seen in ninth grade. But it's a, it, this is about where things are in the state. And of course, that makes a lot of sense because we've just been through a year that is incredibly difficult. Um, we don't ask parents and families I uh how they feel about um depression because they can really only speak to that about their own child. So, but this is what the kids are saying about feeling chronically sad and what the staff are saying. And you can see that the numbers for staff went up just a little bit, that depression was a problem. And again, that's consistent with what we've seen here. Now, the next thing I want to look at is um academic motivation. Now, I know that what um, there are a couple of things that you had looked at in the past was meaningful participation. But because this year is a pandemic year and a lot of kids were um working and learning remotely from home, the meaningful participation questions didn't quite track. And so it's very hard to compare from last year to this year, given the remote setting. So instead of looking at meaningful participation, I decided to look at academic motivation because also in terms of academic motivation, that tells you a little bit about student engagement as well. So last year, when we were looking at how academically motivated kids were, we looked at eighty-seven percent of fifth graders, eighty-six percent of sixth graders, which is great because that is above the eighty percent target that we're going for that tells us that our systems are really functioning the way we want them to. Seventh and eighth grade showed a little room for growth, but still fairly good. Seventh, seventh grade, seventy-five percent of your kids were saying that they felt academically motivated. Now, so there was a little room for growth in seventh grade and a little more room in eighth grade. Now, when we get to staff, it says fifty-one percent. I want to clarify two things here. When we look at the students, we are looking at for students who agree or strongly agree. We're looking at the top two categories. But when we look at staff, if we were to look at um agree and strongly agree, your numbers would be close to a hundred percent, ninety, ninety-five percent, which is great because that means your, your staff agree or strongly agree that um the school motivates kids. But that's not very useful in telling you where you need to grow. So with staff and with adults, what we like to look at is the fifty percent mark. So whereas we're looking at eighty percent for students, for the top two categories, we're looking at fifty percent for the very highest category of strongly agree. If at least fifty percent of your staff strongly agree that the school motivates um kids, then you can feel confident that that is, that is the majority, that is the feeling, that is the climate from the staff perspective. So what that means when we look at parents, again, if we had the top two categories, you would be well into the eighties, eighty-five, ninety, which is wonderful. But it doesn't tell you if this is an area that needs growth. So for looking at parents and families, their responses on the survey, that they're at forty-one percent strongly agreeing. So that means you might be able to grow some there and making sure that parents know or finding out from parents, you know, if they don't think that the school is really working to motivate kids, what, what did they see as the difference? And now I should point out that for both the staff and the parent survey, I'm looking at an aggregate. If you break it down by school, um or even by elementary versus middle school, you might see different numbers, but this, just to give you an idea. So now let's look at it compared to this year's data. So this year's data, students feeling academically motivated um has dropped. And this to me is not a surprise because I, you know, if I could see you, if I were there in person, I would say, please raise your hand if you've had a hard time motivating yourself to do the work that you've always done, but over Zoom. You know, that's a much different way of being in the world. And I can always raise my hand in, when I ask that question because, yes, have I found it hard to focus on my work? Yes. Have I found it hard to want to learn to do new things and with with my work? Yes, because this pandemic year has taken an emotional, social, and intellectual toll on all of us. So the fact that your numbers did not drop more is actually, I think, a testament to your, um your teachers, to your staff, to your parents, to your kids, because it really to think that kids might um I, this is much higher than what we've seen in the state. The numbers for academic motivation drop, seem to drop a lot more. And um, and the fact that the staff say that kids are not, that the school doesn't motivate the kids, that only twenty-six percent strongly agree, it, it's not surprising because it must feel very difficult to motivate kids from a distance. And the same thing with parents. Again, these two numbers, please remember, are at the strongly agree. If you added in agree, they would probably be, they would be much higher. They wouldn't be at the eighty percent, but they would be much higher. So that's though, that is looking at two different ways of thinking about your data for the two goals that you have and that gives you some ideas of of where you might grow going forward. It's really difficult for you to compare last year to this year because of the pandemic. But at least it gives you an idea of where you want to go going forward. You can see that um in twenty nineteen, twenty, that that school year, you had some room to grow here with academic motivation with your seventh and eighth graders. And now knowing what this past year was like for them, um you, you can still see that you have some room to grow with academic motivation. So you, you might want to think about, well, what is it that we can do to help kids feel more motivated? And and the same is true here for fifth and sixth grade. And this is where you might want to go back and look at your meaningful participation for your kids in the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty school year to guide you once you're back in person. But one other piece of data I want to show you has to do with caring adult relationships. Um, it's really important that you think. Um, it's really i- important that you think about how do we make certain that every kid can say that there is one adult who really listens to them, who notices when they're not there, and who really cares about them? When we ask staff, um, eh, last year, you know, does this school have adults that really care about kids? Fifty-three percent strongly agree. That's remarkable. So that, I'm gonna guess that when you add, if you put those numbers together with the agree, you must be close to ninety-five percent. So that tells you something remarkable about your staff. When you look at parents and families, do they, what do they say about the school having adults that really care about kids? Forty-one percent strongly agree. So maybe there's a little bit of work to do here with parents and families. But overall, you're, you have crossed the threshold. Now, when you look at fifth and sixth grade, you can see that you are very close. In sixth grade, you're almost at that eighty percent threshold, which tells you that in sixth grade, the systems that you have in place for making sure every kid has an adult that cares about them, that is really close to the target. In fifth grade, there's a little bit of a difference there. That's what we were seeing, uh, not last year, but it's still very close. There's some room to grow in both seventh and eighth grade in terms of wanting to reach that eighty percent mark of at least eighty percent of our kids feel like there's an adult who listens to them, who notices when they're not there, and really cares about them. So what does the data say for this year? So interestingly, and a testament to your teachers and to the teachers across the state, looking at seventh and eighth grade, you really did not lose any ground. You really did not lose any ground in sixth grade. Um, and it looks like you, you gained some ground in fifth grade, which is interesting. So, um, and then loo- and with staff, didn't lose any, staff still believe that staff really care about students. You really didn't lose any ground, um, with, with parents and families. So this is both encouraging and discouraging. Here's the encouraging thing. That in this year of intense emotional, social, and intellectual struggle and difficulty, you did not, as a district, lose any ground. And that is a testament to your staff um, of reaching out to their kids, making sure the kids know that there was somebody who listens to them, who notices when they're not there, and who really cares about them. To maintain this in this pandemic year is really encouraging. Um, and that it is recognized by both the staff and the families. Not to say there's not room for growth, of course there is, but it's really encouraging. Now, the discouraging part of this is that where you were very close, um, in your, your fifth and sixth grade in having, um, reaching that eighty percent mark, you had some room to grow in both seventh and eighth grade. And you still have that about the same amount, uh, to grow. And just keep in mind that when kids have at least one adult at school who really cares about them, they are less likely to say that they, uh, have chronic sadness and they're more likely to say they feel academically motivated. So one of the things that I would want to encourage you to think about is how you would take action on this data so that you can make certain that kids do have that connection because the caring adult relationship connection is going to be what makes certain that kids feel safe physically, that they feel safe emotionally, and that when those two areas of the brain are satisfied because they've had an adult that can help them, then they can engage in learning. And this is consistent with what we know about trauma-informed care. So when an, when a child comes, we know that forty-five percent of kids, um, come to school having experienced at least one adverse childhood experience. And after this pandemic year, I imagine that that number's going to be much higher. So when kids come to school, they're going to need a teacher or some other adult that can help them regulate their body. They, they are going to need an adult that can help them relate, that they feel connected to. And then once they have that adult that can help them in those two ways, then they can actually reason. So what all of this says to me is that if, if you really want to focus on what's next with your data, it's making certain that every kid has one adult that really cares about them. And what you, what do you do? What are the, what are the activities that you could do? Well, the, this, um, PowerPoint, I have, uh, some resources that are available that you can go and look at for, um, caring adult relationships. This is, um, a, a document that has ideas about activities that are no cost and low cost. This is from, um, the Harvard School of Education and it talks about how to make sure that every kid has, um, an adult that cares about them. And then these other, uh, documents are all documents that are located at this link. And I will be sending this PowerPoint to Dr. Shower is to share with you and with the administrators. They'll also have it as well. So that was a lot of information. Nobody yelled out at me. So I'm gonna stop sharing now and see if there are any questions that you have.
Initially, um, and it's actually, as I recall, last year when we did the, the last time we did the Cal School survey, uh, we also had a section for special education. And, and I didn't see it addressed here.
We, we did do it.
Okay.
And, uh, it's in the full report.
Okay.
So we did do it and, um, we can, we can bring that to you um, at a future, at a future meeting. And it, it actually, um, we can send a report. It'll be up on the website. Uh, what's interesting in that report is that there were a number of areas that demonstrated improvement. But we did give that, we did give that.
Okay, so we do have that report. We can compare it and see what the data looks like.
Yeah.
All right, I was just curious about that.
Yes.
And then, yeah, I guess, you know, I, I think this, this is, you know, in terms of, you know, room to grow and especially with focusing in the middle school. Um, you know, in terms of caring adults, I, I think this feeds in really well with our LCAP. So I think this was, this was great information to have. I really appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just, I, 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 oh, I'm sorry. Can I interrupt?
No.
I, I was just gonna say that, uh, it was the, we were working so hard to find the right time. We wanted to give this assessment again and we wanted to time it when we were back to the blended model. And I just want to thank Dr. Pointer and uh, we had other staff with Cal Schools that were working with us because this was later than when we planned. But, um, great information and our whole administrative team last, I think it was only last week, worked with Dr. Some of those resources that she shared, I just was so impressed. I just want you to know, our administrative team, they're diving into this. They're studying these resources as we're working on our LCAP and our, our school plans, just looking at some, uh, ways to move forward, including our summer program with, with how we can work from this data and these resources to move forward.
Yeah, I think the timing is excellent. It's, 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 it's very relevant, so. Yeah, I appreciate it. And, 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 and it was a very thorough explanation. That was a very deep dive. I, I really appreciate that. That, that really kind of explains all that data. That was, that was, that was wonderful.
Well, I, I'm glad you think so because it was, uh, it, it's very hard to take all of that and condense it down into a, a short, uh, just kind of laugh to everybody. As I'm glad it was helpful. I'm glad it, it makes sense and, um, and there's much more of where that comes from, but not for tonight. Your administrator's got a much deeper dive than even tonight.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Did you have anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Pointer.
Nice to see everyone. Bye-bye.
Okay, um, so then this is perfect timing. Then we will transition to item number two, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP. Progress, update, and timelines.
Yep, very good. Thank you so much. And again, we, we talked about the goals. We, we see some examples of data. I'm gonna turn this to Donna Mio Whitlock, Mrs. Whitlock, about, um, just what we're looking, some key actions that we're looking at in light of of priorities for next school year and like related to data too.
Exactly. I want to start just with a little background. Is that in your packet, you have a summary of our, of our draft and the proposed actions that go with our goals. But this Friday, um, afternoon on our website, we will be, uh, posting for public viewing and feedback. We will be posting our forty-seven page, um, LCAP. So this will be available on Friday to the public to, uh, to view. And then there'll be a process where the public can um, give us feedback on it as well. So what you have is a summary. Um, and I kind of like to refer to the LCAP. I think it's important to refer to it as a strategic plan. So this is, uh, reflecting our strategic plan for the next three years. But every year, um, our stakeholders and our board and, and our staff will have the ability to tweak it, update it, make any changes that, that we need to. And so, um, one thing that, uh, in, in our, Dr. Pointer had pointed out were the supports that, that we really need for students in school. They were the universal supports that support all children, targeted for that fifteen percent intensive for the five percent. And I, and, and I was happy to, to just set that reminder because when I look at these actions or these supports that we're gonna highlight, um, we are including universal, targeted, and intensive. I wanted to point out also that, um, when we look at the funding that's attached, you don't have the funding attached in, in this report, but on Friday, you'll see a portion of the funding. And then next month, when we bring it to you, you'll see, um, even more, you'll see the finished document. Our Fiscal Services Department are working just night and day right now to help make our dreams or our actions come true by adding the funding sources. And so, um, what funding sources do we use? Um, the guidelines say we need to use all funds necessary to meet the goals established for students. And so in our case, that's our local control, um, funding formula, which includes our base funding and our supplemental concentration. It includes federal dollars, our typical Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, but also it includes some of our, um, emergency relief funding sources. Um, other state dollars, for example, the AV eighty-six, which you're gonna look at our, um, Extended Learning Opportunity Plan and a little bit, um, for, for approval. Um, state preschool, other state daughteries, lottery, and, you know, a variety of state dollars. And then local dollars. And that would be, um, any grants or any other dollars that we have. So it's truly braided. And many of these, um, actions have just a, a multiple funding sources. And what's really important to also know that we were charged to do in, in this plan is really specifically look at supplemental and concentration dollars. And we have over sixty percent of our children are hope, and are in the unduplicated learner category. That's, um, English learners, those socioeconomic foster children. And so we have to also make sure that, um, there's increased or improved services to these students. So there's a special focus in this plan on that. Um, so to look at goal number one, which the focus is on engagement that you've already seen. And this, uh, number one is really the equity access and academic rigor. And something that I really wanted to point out when it says with inclusive practices, it's more than than just, I'm saying that we're gonna make inclusive practices. We're also working with our SELPA, which is our Special Education, um, Director. She's also going through this plan with us to make sure that we just specifically call out and, um, how we're supporting our special, um, students in special education. And so I'll kind of point that out as I go. Um, our Director of Curriculum, Claudia Del Toro, and I looked at the need for, for this goal. What are the needs? And we looked at student data. And we wanted to, it's important to point out that our high need student groups, virtually all of them in mathematics still have a lot of improvement in the performance. We know we want to be a green blue. We're still at, uh, yellow and orange. So mathematics is definitely a priority, English Language Arts. Most of our student groups, including students with disabilities, um, are in orange. I do want to point out that when you see, um, the whole plan, you'll see the tremendous improvement that they've made. Although we only have two thousand nineteen data on our dashboard, a lot of improvement, but we still need to make more. Um, especially for students with disabilities, we need to really increase the participation rate. So that's something that we're looking at. It's in the, the state, um, testing program, achievement gap. Um, I know Claudia Del Toro is looking at our district reading assessment and our map. And we looked at that and then student engagement and, um, that we kind of went over also. But during distance learning, it was really difficult for kiddos. So you have the metrics. Every action needs to have a way to measure its, uh, progress. So we have that. Now, I'm not talking too fast, but I know they just kind of wanted to touch bases on this. So a couple of key strategies that I wanted to highlight. Key strategy number one for goal one is, um, the Extended Learning After School and Summer. We're prioritizing using some emergency funds from, um, from our state funds and also for emergence, um, the federal funds. We are really gonna focus next year on, um, prioritizing academic after-school, um, learning for our students. And we are looking at, really focusing on acceleration. I know that there's been learning loss, but we want to look at the acceleration and acceleration blocks. We're really, uh, hopeful that, and our teachers, actually, when we worked with GFA, they seemed very positive about some new plans for extended day to really focus on kids two to four days a week. And we'll talk a little more about that when we look at our, uh, uh, the ELO, uh, plan as well. Second key strategy, which is a big one, it's a, really, it's the largest part of goal area one, is the building leadership capacity. Because if you've noticed in there, we've used terms like teachers on special assignment, which are PUSAs, and we've talked about lead teachers. The real priority in this is that it not only is going to provide additional direct instruction to students, but it's also gonna provide some real important educator support, professional learning and support in the classroom. And so with these lead teachers, um, notably, we have lead teachers for early reading acceleration. This, um, NGSS, which is our science standards. We have some teacher leaders on PUSAs and ELD. And, um, really is going to address the needs of not only students, but, um, for our teachers as well. And let's finish with goal one. Do you have any questions before I just finish off with goal two? Goal one is a long one. What is that, like twenty-seven actions? I think I added another one that's not on here, so it's twenty-eight, but. Any questions when it comes to anything that you've read? Okay, cool. You can always ask me afterwards too. So for goal number two, whole learning development through social, emotional learning. Some of the, um, excellent, some of the key need areas, um, that, that we really looked at, were, uh, chronic absenteeism. On our last, uh, California dashboard, all of our groups were in low, were in orange. And has really been a focus and we've continued to focus. And you'll see a lot of that in, um, in our action areas. Suspensions, um, most of our high, high need subgroups, which are unduplicated students, they did score in the orange. And, um, as Dr. Pointer pointed out, our Cal, um, Cal Schools, we did look at this. I only listed a couple here. But you will see in the metrics on this plan, you'll see I, I chose, uh, the areas that she was speaking of um, to really look at. And we're gonna follow each year to see if there's improvement. Um, key metrics to measure. And then I wanted to point out, this is a really exciting goal. And it's just really intentionally focused on social, emotional learning. Um, the first key strategy are the mental health and counseling services. We are from the only district still that have either a counselor or a social worker at every school site. And we are maintaining that, those, that support. And then our school resource officer, which in our district, I just felt it was important to note, what a prevention specialist he is, just building relationships, a lot of social emotional learning, he supports our middle school students. And he provides a lot of support at elementary level too. Expanded learning and enrichment, which is action number four. You remember with our race to the top grant, we were able to just really develop, we call our BFLC clubs after school. And with funding shortages, and as we, we moved out of the race to the top, um, era, we hadn't had our BFLC clubs kind of got, got trimmed out in the last few years. But we really are focusing on, um, at every school site, really bringing back some real robust, uh, programs after school. Arts, music, sports, sports especially were noted in, um, most of our stakeholder groups. They, over and over, they said, please, our kids need physical, you know, physical exercise, and they want to do team sports. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, key strategy three, I wanted to, you know, focus on, is a more, also kind of on the positive or prevention side. It's the positive behavior intervention and support. We really are looking at some registered behavior technicians that will support teachers, you know, in the classroom, support them with strategies and go in and do some modeling and work with students, you know, before we get to the stage where they may be returning for assessing. So it's kind of more on that prevention. Um, and the last two are really exciting, you know, and we are, we're looking at using some of that emergency funding. And it's the ruler training, it's through Yale University. And it's the principles of, uh, emotional development, and it's going to start by working on it with our adults. And really focusing on adults and, and, um, caring adults and developing relationship. All of our schools will participate, including our district, um, at the district level, in teams of five. And the idea is that these teams will then work at their sites to really support the other adults at their site. And, um, at the same time, there's a wonderful program, I think Karen has mentioned, called Healthy Hearts and Minds. It's an arts and mentoring program, and that's a tier-two support, so that's real targeted. Targeted for those fifteen percent of children that just need to be disengaged and need more. And Valley Oaks, Greer and Marengo Ranch have, um, asked if they could have the art and mentoring program at their site. And it will provide support, I believe, to sixty to eighty children, you know, continuously throughout the year. And, um, really give them the, 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 the really targeted support they need. I, I wanted to point out, just one last thing, is this with the Yale, um, ruler training. Um, that is, Karen, help me with it, two years, it's two years' worth of training. So we have coaching that goes along with that also. So it's not like a one and done type of training, and then that's it. It's two years' worth of support to adults. That was a mouthful, but you can tell I'm really, I'm just really into this. I just, this is so hopeful. I think it's, it's just what we need, and it's some real, um, I, I think we're really thinking out of the box on some of these things. Leo, did you have anything to, you were such a big part of this too, and, and, uh, Lois on helping us with, uh, well, your summer program has been, you know, it's fabulous, the, the, uh, planning for our summer services, but anything to add?
Faithful that we have the extra funds to do, put these actions in place, we would definitely need it. Yeah, and have this opportunity otherwise.
Okay, any discussion, questions? I just want to point out too, and, and, and I, and I'm really pleased that, having read this, you know, the Cal School survey prior to looking at this, and, and, and goal two, to how, how well that addresses, you know, the questions that I have in my mind, and especially seeing item three, that really, I mean, I highlighted that one because I was like, that is so necessary. And so I was really appreciative, you know, that we are really trying to address our needs. So I, I really, it just, I think it was a really, it was a good transition to, 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 to look at the Cal School survey, to, to evaluate it, and then to look at this, it really makes a lot of sense for me. So I was, I really appreciate all the effort that's gone into this, because this, uh, I mean, to me anyway, I really felt like, and especially item three, to, to me was huge. So I'll just put, anybody else?
This day, June on Friday, yeah, there's been just a ton of feedback in different ways. I mean, this is months of work to get it to this point, because of not only surveys and other data, but different committees. And then we think that we've got it ready to go, and that we're getting more feedback, so that, I think, is what, some of these things evolved in terms of opportunities for teacher leaders in some different ways to, uh, the supports and opportunities that will happen this summer and then evolve through the school year. So again, uh, our three leaders here, uh, just have done so much to get it this far. And what are, I think is, uh, what Ms. Whit, Whitlock had said earlier, is that we do, uh, we are required to post this, we're going to post it either Thursday or Friday. Um, and we'll make sure that the public and our, our employees know that, uh, for feedback. And then we have a public hearing with the board on June sixteenth, that's a requirement. And then that will also include much more detail with the budget. That's Lois, your leadership in terms of staff that are working really hard on that to bring it to the board for that special meeting. And then, um, you know, the goal would be to bring it for your consideration for approval at the June twenty-third board meeting, which will also include the school plan as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, moving on, uh, item, uh, excuse me, well, LCAP four, LCAP goal four then. Item number one is twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one demographics and enrollment projections.
Alright, thank you. So tonight, we will present to you our twenty-twenty-one demographics and enrollment projections. It's been about two years, last time we brought this to you was in eighteen nineteen. And we have with us tonight Ryan Reynolds, he is the project manager from Schoolworks. And in your packet, you have the complete, um, study and also the PowerPoint that Ryan can be walking us through tonight um, to look at some projections for us.
So this is Ryan.
Alright. Good evening.
Um. Mr. Reynolds.
Um, is it alright if I share my screen instead? I have the PowerPoint loaded.
Yes, yes, please do.
Alright. This will be a little bit of a quicker and easier summary than going through the entire demographic study. So to, um, in our demographics update, we take into account, um, a number of different factors that impact projections and, um, enrollment, uh, birth rates, new developments, mobility, um, you know, who's moving in and out of the district. Um, we compare those enrollment projections to the capacities at each site um, to find, you know, utilization percentage on how well those facilities are being used. Um, just as a quick summary of some of the highlights from our, uh, findings. The enrollment this year was down by two hundred and ten students when we compared it to last year. Um, we've noticed that significant impacts across, um, a number of our, uh, clients in the state. Um, and another similar factor to a lot of other districts is a smaller TK and kindergarten classes this year. Um, it's very difficult for, for kids that age to be able to really get a lot out of, um, virtual programs. And so with those grades being, um, more optional, we assume that a number of parents decided some form of private school or to hold on back until next year. Um, for our projections, we show a slight growth, but it's mostly due to projected development activity. We, in our study, we assume six hundred and eighty-three new homes to be occupied over the next six years within your district. Um, overall, the projected increase for next year, we showed twenty-three students and a total of a hundred and fifty-nine students over the next six years. Um, so the base of our data is a mapping system where we have the district boundary, this, um, each school's boundary and the location of where the students live and where they attend, so we can track things like students transferring between your schools or the students coming in from outside of your district. Um, the birth rates chart on this next page, um, shows the number of kindergarten students in blue, of the blue bars, and the number of births associated, um, that correlate with those births from five years earlier. And we use that to help try and, um, track the capture rate percentage to project those births into the, those kindergarten classes into the future based on the births. Um, and so you can see here that there was a, um, lower kindergarten class as compared to last year and in compared to the rate of last year, with the bar being lower than the, uh, blue line. Now, I'm sorry, we also show the new development impacts that we project into the future for those kindergarten classes, which cause them to increase a little bit over, um, just that base assumed rate. As far as the new development, we, um, have a very talented, uh, staff member in our office who gets in touch with all of the developers and planning commissions in cities and tries to gather as much data as possible and try and make sure that we have reasonable housing projections in our assumptions. Um, we found a total of three thousand two hundred units planned. Um, and we are predicting that, uh, six hundred and eighty-three of those will be occupied over the next six years. Those planned units are not planned to be built over the next six years, just show the number of units possible on the books if everything could get built. Um, and we show that the average student generation rate from each new housing unit is, um, just under, uh, fifth, half a student from each home. Which is about on average with the state's numbers. Um, and we are able to load those developments into the map, so we can show which, um, elementary and middle school boundary they'll be in, or middle schools are entire boundaries, sorry. And so we track the enrollment across the grades over year compared to the original kindergarten class to see the general mobility rates of students moving into or out of your district. And we tend to notice that overall, um, you have an increased rate. Did I see a hand raised?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. And so, um, the next page shows our overall district projections, both the ten years history and six years projection, separated by the different grade groups. Um, the enrollment has been declining slightly with a big hit this year. And for the future, we show that there'll be some growth, mostly in those middle school grades, because we show a lot of, um, growth in those grades over the, due to mobility as well. Um, we have those projections broken down by school in this summary here. Um, and so we can, uh, and the annual change per year, which grows by about twenty a year with some bigger numbers, um, a little bit out in the future and some smaller ones. Um, the next slides, I kind of just included because, for the, uh, board report, but it just shows that we have that data by school. Um, we showed the red line, which shows the number of students attending the school in comparison with the blue line of students living in the area. So we can see here at Little Canyon, they get a lot of incoming transfers from other schools in the district as well as from outside the district. Um, Marengo Ranch has the same, um, pattern where they have an increased number of transfers in compared to transfers out. River Oaks, um, kind of used to be that way, but is now, um, matches about with the students living in their area. And same thing with Valley Oaks. Greer is the one school that has a lot of transfers out from its area. Um, if everyone that lived in that area went to that school, it'd be over capacity right now. Um, and then the middle school, there's not a lot of transfers since it's the only middle school in the district. Now, when we take all of those combined, um, we can, and we compare those enrollments to the capacities, um, it gives us these utilization numbers that can be very useful for determining how crowded a school is feeling. Um, and we have those numbers also showing on a map here, because it's sometimes easier to see it visually when, if there was an overcrowded school and, uh, you know, underutilized schools, sometimes that can help understand whether there's, you know, needs for changes in boundaries and such. And that about sums it up, if there are any questions. I know I went through that pretty fast.
Any question? Uh, just, I just have one question, um, you know, because obviously enrollment, you know, decline was significant this year.
Yes.
And I think we probably all have a pretty good idea of what may or may not have caused that. Uh, what is the anticipation about those numbers rebounding?
So in our projection, I'm glad you asked that, in our projections, um, across the board with a number of our clients, we made an assumption that the, um, number of kindergarten students and, um, transitional kindergarten students, that we were, we would kind of have expected this year. We are assuming that a large portion of them will return next year for first grade, for kindergarten and first grade. Um, and so that is built into our assumptions as a kind of rebound factor. And then we also took more of a weight on, um, some of the past um, cohorts rather than the current year numbers, since, you know, kind of across the grades, the numbers weren't looking as good. And we don't think that that's a reasonable direction of the future. And so we, um, kind of discounted that to a degree to get more in line with what we feel is a more reasonable projection.
Anybody else?
I could just add a few details, um, as of last Friday, we're down two hundred and forty-five students compared to last year. Continue to drop. I'm glad to see that it looks like enrollment will increase in the next couple of years. But even with the projections at twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven, we still won't be at the enrollment of twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. So, um, hopefully for, um, you know, the, our, our budget and for, you know, serving kids, you know, growing in the community, that projections will be faster than this. Growth will, will happen faster, because it's still, still not, when you look at the six-year picture, not many kids.
No, it's not.
It's not.
Considering all the development that's taking place in this town, the numbers really don't seem to add up, you know, it's, 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 you know.
Nationwide, the birth rate's been dropping for the last six years.
Yes.
Does it really?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you're, yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just an outlier.
Yeah.
I was watching that, looking at the birth rate.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because obviously, I mean, in terms of funding, that's really important to understand where we're at in terms of growth. So, yeah, so that's important, and, and so, yeah, this, this information was very timely and critical, but obviously, you know, this, this past year is an anomaly, and so it's going to be. obviously, you know, this, this past year is an anomaly, and so it's going to be interesting to see how much we can actually rebound from that. So, okay, so I appreciate that, actually. Okay. Does anybody else have anything to add? Okay, well, if not, Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. And that brings us on to item number two, the Robert L. McCaffrey Middle School Track and Public Access. Do we have, do we have pictures of the track?
Yeah, such a, such a magnificent track, and we look forward to our, our children and more utilizing the track. And we've already heard tonight that, you know, there are areas of, of engagement related to sports and fitness that we're just, I think our, our children and our families are hungry for. I think we have some members of the community that elected, be hungry for that track too, because it is quite a quite a beautiful track. So, um, Lois Yonah, Director of Business Services, is going to update our board about the track and considerations with public access and then turn it to our board in terms of questions and areas related to it.
All right, thank you. I'll start with just sharing a little bit of how the McCaffrey staff is starting to talk about how they're going to use that track. They have plans to use it this summer. We have a PE teacher, actually the Athletic Director Heather Nelson, that will be teaching PE during the summer. They're talking about using it for fitness, soccer, like football, outdoor circuit training, they're starting to plan for lunchtime walking clubs for staff and students, cross-country team training area, running for RIT. They're also looking into attracting, attracting for next year, and so they're active in, in planning that for both PE and for extracurricular. And then I wanted to share a little bit about what we do for requests for public use for any of our facilities. We do open up a lot of our facilities outside and inside classrooms, multipurpose room, gyms and that for the public to use. We have an agreement, a facility use agreement that an organization would have to complete. There's insurance paperwork that's required. We need to know the time of the day, the hours, and we need to make sure there's custodial staff available for cleaning and things like that. But our facility use is planned. We know about it ahead of time. There's security involved. So when we look at how we could possibly open up that track to the community or to the public, it would be through organizations that would complete the facility use paperwork form. They would let us know the purpose. We would know when they would be there. We would have the right security. We have reached out to the city, Parks and Rec, to see if at this time, if they're interested in using the track for any of their programs or even interested in entertaining some kind of opportunity for us to work together and getting the public out there. But as far as just being able to open the gates and let the public in, there's security and there's safety with that. It would be opening the public up to the whole McCaffrey campus. And then you have to just, there's liability. There's wear and tear. You know, there's maintenance. So definitely if an organization were to reach out to us, we would go through the process and you know, following all the parameters, we would allow a group to, to use the facility or definitely with the city, if the city wants to work something out. We'll continue to reach out. As of now, we have not had anybody reach out to us about using using the track for the field.
Okay, you bring up a really good point then. The, the track is actually inside the campus. So there's not like a gate or a fence or anything that separates that track from the rest of the camp.
Well, the, the campus or the, the track is secured by a gate, but the access gate, the egress, it is a a panic gate by fire code. We have to be able to have a gate that you can just push the, the bar and be able to get out. And so once you're inside, you need a key to get inside, but you don't need a key to get out, and then you're on campus. If that makes sense, then you're on the McCaffrey campus.
Does it only exit into the campus or does it exit on the, to Marengo Ranch?
We have an exit that goes, there's a gate that goes out onto the road there as well, but at the front of the school or at the front of the track on back behind the portables, we have, if there's a gate there and you have to have a key to get in. But then you can also just get right without a key. There's a panic move, get right back on campus, yes.
You can go out either exit and saw it was locked.
Yes, you can't keep that locked. So, yeah, once you're inside there, if we were to say, open the the gate that's on the street sign, we were to open that and just let public into the track, they would be able to push that gate and get right on the other side, get right on the campus.
Get access to campus. Okay, so that's, that is definitely a, a security and a safety concern.
And we are actively working in and maintenance. Matter of fact, we met this morning, we've already purchased surveillance cameras. And we're working with an electrician to the poles that are needed to get the cameras out there because we do feel that we need some security out there. So we're hoping to have that in place in July.
So, say we know somebody who wants to, they want to start using that track, they want to go to a safe place. They came and formed like their own walking club. They can come into the facility use. And we could, then they could really use it with their club.
Yes, we can work out the details with that, yes.
They need a liability insurer?
There is some liability insurance with that, and most of the organe, organizations are sporting clubs or boy scouts or girl scouts or things like that. They, they do have the insurance if needed.
I, I just know, again, before we had this magnificent track, again, we had a track that was, at least we had something out there and it was you know, again, it wasn't fenced in and, and people who lived around would use it a lot. So I can understand also just you know, wanting to, to make use of it, but, but we wanted to surface these things to consider in order to do that.
I've been approached by two or three people that live on the outside. And it's, it's, it's a safe, secure place to go exercise. You don't have to worry walking on the streets, worry about cars, worry about dogs, worry about other people here. Safe place.
Maybe they can form a club.
Maybe we can form a club and work with the city. I mean, maybe that could even be some kind of, you know, the activities that you could sign up through the city. Maybe they can do some kind of exercise. Running club or walking club a couple of days a week or something. So we could do that.
So we may want to consider dropping, yeah, the Recreation Department or something and see if there's if they, you know, if that's something they desire to do where we can coordinate with them, where they could staff it and, and then people could come and run during a certain time or something.
And he checked with the high school also to see how they manage their, their field and their track.
Time to change.
I know.
I grew up, the track doesn't always open. Until like eight o'clock, whenever the sun went down, they'd be able to walk it up.
Okay. Any other questions on this issue then? So then if not, we'll go on to other reports. And we have what, the School Services of California 2021, 2022 Governor's Budget Workshop.
Yes, thank you.
That's gonna be interesting.
Yes, it is a very interesting, a lot of good news though, it's positive right now. Why will, she will put up the slide for you, the PowerPoint. You also have a packet in front of you. I gave you more slides than I normally do just because there's some extra information you might want to read later. Some of the slides I will just summarize and go through pretty quickly, so we're not taking an hour for this. But overall, the, the May revise is very positive for education. It's a positive budget. But I want to just outline that right now, all of this is just a proposal, or proposals at this time. There's a lot that can change between now and June 30th, when everything is fully adopted. But we will go through numerous new proposals. Just some themes, California is roaring back, is what the governor is saying. With increased revenue, it's quite amazing how much revenue California has still brought in during this pandemic. And we are going to see aggressive spending proposals and see really aggressive increased ongoing spending for education. And the next three slides just really shows you how California gets our revenue. It's called the big three. The first one is the personal income tax. You can see, we'll look at the, the gold bar on the far right for all three of these slides. You can see that it's up by almost 15%. You can see that for our sales tax is up for almost 12%. And then the last one, corporate tax is up almost 9%. So that's why California revenue just continues to rise. What does that mean for education? The next slide. That means Prop 98 has gone up. Now, we are projected to have almost $94 billion for education. That is a 9.2 increase from the governor's budget proposal in January. Here's a quick slide just to show you how Prop 98 funding has grown over the last few years, really over the last 10 years. We saw significant gains between the 1920 and 2021 year, but then surprisingly, we're still seeing gains this next year. We'll go to the next slide to show you some changes in LCF of funding and statutory COLA since the governor's budget. With this increase, we are now projected to have LCF, LCF funding at 3.2 billion. I'll skip down to the poll. There's a big change possibly in COLA. The statutory COLA could be at 1.7%, the compounded COLA at 4.05, and they're projecting what they call a mega COLA, which is an additional 1% that could put our COLA up to 5.07%. That would be about 1.5 million additional dollars for us, based on our, our enrollment. So the mega COLA. Not like mega lottery.
That's what it feels like.
So we'll start getting to some of the proposals now. This proposal here is a concentration grant proposal. They're proposing an extra 15% of concentration funds. It's based on your UPP that you're unduplicated or English learners foster youth and low socioeconomically disadvantaged. We would fit in the middle there between the 60 to 80% because we are at 61% right now. We could potentially receive $210 additional concentration money per ADA if this were to go. Our next slide, cash deferrals. The governor would continue to pay down deferrals, but what we would like to note is that it would not change our current deferrals. So we have had deferrals since February of this year. They will continue through June of 2021. But this budget, budget does, it stops all the future deferrals after this year. This is timing with enrollment. So here's California trend here. You can see a huge drop in attendance for California. 160,000 kids dropped this year. And the state is used to about 20,000 to 30,000 drop the last couple of years. So again, it's not just us, as Mr. Reynolds talked about, but that is a big dip for California students. Um, the next slide just kind of outlines something that we've been talking about for a while. We are funded based on our 1920 ADA. We can do that for 2021. But the slide just, you know, shows you the looming question for us, how many students will return in 2122? And if we don't have the students return, then we will be facing that big clip that we're talking about for 2223. Because we will no longer be held harmless. We will be funded on the students that actually come to school next year for 2223. Thank you, next year. Lots of reason. Special education would also receive the COLA, but they're proposing that special education would just receive the 4.05 COLA, not the mega COLA. Also, what stays in the budget is $300 million for special education early incentive grant. That's money that will receive for preschoolers with disabilities. That stays. Quickly go through some of the more proposals here, possibly $2 billion to expand the in-person learning grant. That would be additional than what we have now. We go to the next slide. Again, another $2 billion to expand the new in-person instruction grant. And it looks like all of these pots of money is would be able to be spent in the same way. Another proposal is summer and after-school programs. This would be to provide no cost after-school and summer programs in elementary school districts. This would be a phased implementation. What they're proposing is the funding would go the first year, next year, the funding would start for districts that are at 80% or higher UPP. The following year, 70%, the year after that, 60%. So if this were to pass, we might not see these funds for a couple of years. Universal Transitional Kindergarten, lots of money going here too. There is a proposal that TK would be provided for all four-year, four-year-olds by 24, 25. Also potentially cutting the classroom ratio by half. It will be a phased in approach as well, but it would start in 2223 with that goal of full implementation by 2425. These next five slides, I will summarize in one, there's $3.3 billion in educator investments, what they're calling building the teacher pipeline. Some of the things that this would fund would address the long-term teacher recruitment. Increase special education teachers, increase teachers in the area of computer science. Funding for classified staff to pursue teaching careers and professional development for administrators. Lot 3.3 billion. That takes us to slide one, two, one. I left the slides in there so you can read a little bit more about what that, what that can mean for supporting educators. But jumping to child nutrition, there's $100 million in proposal. That could go to kitchen infrastructure, cooking and service equipment and training and a farm-to-school food initiative. More, I will skip to slide 24, more one-time proposals, 30 million for county offices to provide services for foster youth, 7 billion to expand the broadband and internet services statewide. And over 3 billion, more than 3 billion with five years to really address behavioral health needs. Just a quick snapshot of what district reserves are looking like right now. Reserves are higher because of the closure. Ending balances for many districts were higher because of, are higher because of the temporary freezing of spending. Elementary districts average with a 22.7 reserve at second enter, we write 10%. Just to kind of compare that. This is already passed. We already have a waiver to extend the free meal programs all the way through June 30th, 2022. Still be offering free meals all of next full year. Something that is going up retirement pensions, Calpers and Calsters are both going up pretty drastically. Calpers currently were at 20.7. You can see the next five years, it's going to go all the way up to 27, over 27%. The next slide shows you Calpers. This is a change in, from, from January. Now Calsters is also going up. We're currently at 16%. Going to go up 16.92 this next year, and then the next few years be almost 20%. Minimum wage, we've talked about this, just preparing us all that we will need to be working on the classified salary schedule this next, next year. Because we need to get up to par with the $15 an hour minimum, minimum wage that will start January 1. So we, we've been talking with CSCA, we're going to create a small subcommittee to start working on that salary schedule, but we do need to make some adjustments. Finally, the last couple of slides, there's definitely Finally, the last couple of slides, there's definitely some, kind of some warnings with this. They're calling it a blind corner. Lots to celebrate, um, very aggressive budget. But the threat of inflation is real. Um, and it can cause a sharp turn in the economy. And so while it's positive right now, uh, we need to remember that California's general fund is very reliant on the income. The really high income earners and is very volatile. So, um, last slide, final plots there. With state and federal revenues combined, it's 121 billion dollars for K-12 education. Um, we're very grateful that we're not facing the cuts that we were looking at and talking about last year or even the, the year before. Um, grateful to have the resources and the funds to make, you know, pull these great actions in place for the LCAP. Um, but now, you know, the next year or two, it will be a challenge at both the state and local level to figure out how to build and sustain fiscal resilience. So there's a, the next couple of years will be very telling, um, based on what happens with our economy and definitely with our enrollment in our district and in California. And we'll see what happens the next couple of weeks and how all this plays out by June 30th. We will bring you the adopted budget, um, June 16th, or June 16th. Our adopted budget. It'll be based on this. We can't put all of these proposals in our budget, but we can put in the cost of living adjustment. That will be in our 2122 budget. Any questions? I know that there's a lot.
Yeah, definitely a lot. Just interesting that there wasn't another effort to try and find out pers and stirs. Especially knowing that they're increasing significantly. So I know he addressed that in his initial, but I thought it was very helpful. But I guess if you balance that with everything else, there's, you know, still, there's a lot to be pleased about.
Yeah. And we've seen that change over years. So, I mean, that could be a change. It might go back to what he proposed in January by time it's adopted.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay. That takes care of, whoops. One more report, I'm sorry. Almost there. So yeah, item number two, Williams Uniform Complaint Report.
Yeah, this is a, a report that we're required to, uh, report to you. And, uh, for textbooks, emergency school facilities issues and misassignment of teachers, we have no complaints.
That's it.
And that takes care of reports. Okay. Now we'll move on to the IMG Routine Matters in Business, the Consent Calendar. I think you may have already pointed out, but there's no retirements on this current one.
Nope. And no donations, no donations noted.
So is there any questions or concerns regarding the consent calendar? Okay. Then if not, do I have a motion to approve the item 202.197, the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 202.197.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, the motion from Grace Molson to approve item number 202197, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva.
Aye.
Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Casey Rabeli.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Now moving on to item 202.199. And that is board consideration of approval of resolution number 13. Resolution to reduce or eliminate classified staff due to lack of work slash lack of funds.
You're good.
Dr. Shower.
Yes, thank you. Donna Whitlock, if you would please review the background for our board.
Sure. And so we, I'm agreeing to you of four positions. I just want to highlight that that's different than staff members. These are the actual positions. And, um, this, this time every year, it's usually our special education instructional assistants. But to remind you that we have our instructional assistants. They're based on the IEP, the Individual Education, um, plans of the students and the, and the needs of the students. So even at this time, it's changed since it moves the board packet. Because although we are, um, eliminating four positions, at this time, it will only be a layoff of actually one staff member. And, um, the two six-hour positions at McCaffrey's, um, they're, they're being closed because the students are moving on to high school. And there's, um, one position at Marengo Ranch, which was closed a year ago, but it, it got forgotten. They're not taken to the board, apologize. And then we have one, um, preschool instructional assistant position. And that position was in a full inclusion classroom, which is special education and our general education students. Well, um, it's since then is needing to be, um, converted into a special education assistant, um, position. So, uh, the other, the other part of the good news, the layoff of only one staff member, um, as of this morning about 8:30. And another, and you know, it's IEP. We believe that there is also, uh, will be an additional position for that staff member also. So, but we did need to bring this to you because we were eliminating these, um, position numbers.
Any questions?
Oh, good. Good. I was reading, so I just refused because it says you're eliminating two positions. When there was actually four positions.
Thank you very much. I mean, as you can see, look, I know I might caught that today when I had a conversation with Dr. Shower. He said two. And then, um, we added two more. I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out. The board approval is recommended. And again, um, ultimately, it will not be the reduction of any of our current staff members.
And this is based off of, um, seventh graders going, like, sped seventh graders going into eighth grade?
It's, um, based off of our eighth graders. The two positions at McCaffrey are based off of our two, um, two of our eighth grade students who had one-to-one special ed instructional assistance moving on to the high school.
So there's none in seventh grade that are going to need the service in eighth grade? That, that, I'm sorry, that was my question. I could have.
No, we do not have any incoming. And typically, your sixth graders that move into the, a middle school, if they have one-to-one instructional assistance for continuity, um, those one-to-one instructional assistants most of the time move with the student.
Okay, thank you. That answers.
Okay.
My questions. Yeah, no, it's fine. I worded it weird anyways. Thank you.
So the two McCaffrey people, most likely follow them to the high school.
No, um, it, what I was explaining was, is that we have one, um, sixth graders moving to seventh grade with one-to-one instructional assistance on their IP. They will move up, but no, we're different districts. Although that has happened where they really wanted their instructional assistance in the high school. We've kept them in our district. Um, and, and like I said, and you know, you'll see that, you know, every, this time we have to look at, you know, our staffing for next year, but it changes.
Yep. Any other questions or discussion then? Okay, then if not, do I, uh, have a motion to approve item 202.199?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve item 202.199.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, I have a motion from Wes Cable to approve item number 202199, seconded by Casey Rabeli. Tom Silva.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Grace Molson.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item 202.200. And that is board consideration of approval of Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan.
I was going to start it, then I'm going to transition to, uh, Mrs. Whitlock. Uh, I, I was going to say, it, it is just stunning, this potential of funding, uh, level of funding coming to schools. Never seen anything like this. And we'll see, you know, what ultimately happens. But because of these opportunities, um, you know, we've got some, some funding here that's going to help us be able to serve, uh, children in restorative ways, in ways that we can reimagine what we're doing. And in some ways, as the governor talks about this being a roaring budget, it is a time to really help to restore, um, things that our children need to help serve them. But also it's a time to reimagine. And, uh, I, I just again, in, in my years of service in this district, I've never seen us, uh, be able to provide summer services at this level for so many children. But that's not only what this grant, uh, funding is about. So I'm going to turn it to, um, Donna Whitlock to share the plan, uh, key component. And then we'll clarify for you specifically what the funding will look like in terms of compensation for employees this summer.
And this, um, plan comes, um, from our, uh, the AV86, which was passed, and I believe Lois correctly, if I'm wrong, 2.3 million dollars. That has come to our district and we need to have the 2.3 million we have until June 30th of 2022. To have it spent by. And so we needed to come up with a really well-rounded plan. And we talked a little bit about some of the, of the components. I just wanted to highlight, um, the parts of this plan that all of our services need to include for the state. Number one, they need to include, um, extending the instructional learning time that increases the amount of instructional time or services. We need to address accelerating progress to close learning gaps, which you've heard us talk about also in the, in our strategic plan. We need to provide integrated student supports to address other barriers to learning with our funding. Our funding needs to also support community learning hubs to provide students with access to technology and internet. We are using our funding for additional academic services for students. Progress monitoring, diagnostic, benchmark assessment. And then also it needs to include training for school staff and strategies to, um, address student learning. And also specifically in here, we, uh, I know part of it also addresses, um, you know, with our classified staff are included in this plan to help support the, um, implementation. And so, um, you'll see that this plan includes summer 2021 this year and summer 2022. There'll be a little bit of extra money left over, but we're going to be using some federal funding. And Lois, uh, Lois Yon has really organized and coordinated the summer programs. Then, um, extended day, which are applying our acceleration blocks. That'll be during our regular year after school. Um, Claudia Del Toro is working on really expanding those services. And then after-school enrichment, which we talked about, the LC clubs. Jennifer Collier is going to head up the, the work there. Just like in the LCAP, you'll see in the plan, we needed to have stakeholder, um, engagement and stakeholder feedback. And we spent the last two months of our advisory committees at the district level finding out from, um, our stakeholders kind of what they were, what they were wanting for the summer and for extended for the year. And then, um, Claudia especially has been working on the assessment and the evaluation because we want to make sure that the services we're providing are really giving us the, the payback and are helping the students. So we have, um, various assessments and data that we're going to be looking at. And our principals right now are collecting the demographic data. Make sure we're serving the students we need to. And there will be, I believe, when will they, when will they, um, complete their evaluation?
Mid-July, when we have, when the program closes and we have additional data.
And so then that will also continue with our programs. Into next year, we'll be looking at the suspension data and, and, and stuff like, and the things like that. Um, goes into the description of how the parents were informed and we're just, you know, we're really working on getting the word out to, to all of our families. I have a special shout-out to our bilingual community outreach assistants, who are still at this point, still reaching out to really needy families who really need the services in the summer. And then you'll see the, the last part of, or the second to the last part is the summer components. Um, we really have tried, um, you know, really strategically to make sure that we, um, you know, follow the guidelines for the use of the funds. And you can see that if you have any questions, you can ask me. And Lois is fine, especially fine work on our last page of charge expenditure. You can see how we're, we're truly dividing up those funding dollars to meet the needs of students. And you'll see that, uh, yeah, we actually did just, you know, add in the federal dollars also to supplement what we needed. Um, any, any questions about our services that we are going to provide?
No, just to clarify, the funds are coming from the AV86, not out of LCAP. And those funds need to be spent by, what was the date again?
Two thousand, um, January, excuse me, June 30th, 2022. And, um, they're not LCFF funds, but they are the AV86 state funds. And they're included in our LCAP because they're going to help us meet student needs.
We have had an ambitious, uh, you know, start to this because we got it just early on to announce a summer program like we've never had before. And I wanted to specifically call out what we're doing, clarify what we're doing in terms of compensation for the summer program to clarify. It is not a half-day program. It's a full-day program. It's not where educators and staff are supporting one content area. It is a comprehensive summer program. It truly is trying to look at another three weeks of school. So this is very different than what we've ever done before. And I just want to clarify that. We wanted really to get, uh, highly qualified teachers to continue at their school sites, um, to do that. And so we looked at the average daily rate of teachers and came close to that to arrive at the $500 per day. And that's how we arrived at the $9,000. It's about the daily average rate of a teacher in our school district. For our principals, for the $10,000 stipend that they would, that they will get from this, they've already been working on this for a couple of months because there's immense amount of work that goes into planning and recruiting and all of that. So it recognizes that. It recog, it, it was based on what we would pay our migrant education, uh, summer school coordinator. And then, but there are more requirements and more things that our administrators, our principals would need to do. And I just, I want to recognize not only our teachers that are stepping up to do this, but also our administrative team. Because it, it means that the children that are going are not only going to see teachers that they know, um, at the school that they go to, but they also are going to recognize their principal and assistant principals as well, because they're all stepping up to make this work. The compensation for assistant principals, uh, $6,000. It's based on what they're doing to assist with planning. And it recognizes that their contract finishes earlier, so they're paid for six additional days beyond campus to assist, because they've got to get ready like the principals for the next school year. But they've got it, they're running this program as well. Um, our classified staff, and we've negotiated this with, with, um, our CSEA union, will receive an additional $7 per hour for accepting a summer school program. Because we certainly need the people power for them to, uh, for us to do this. Our 11-month classified employees will receive an additional $5 per hour. And for our year-round classified employees, they'll receive a one-time $500 bonus for added summer program efforts. Because ultimately, other things are not going away. And we're recognizing that. So I wanted to, again, I wanted to make, to clarify how we arrived, um, at doing that. And I know there are districts that are being successful in recruitment and there's districts that are struggling with, with doing it. But I think we built something so that the children will come and that we would have employees that would want to do this when they've given their heart and soul through this year. So, uh, but I think what I also wanted to point out is part of the complexity of bringing this plan to you. It was not only about the summer program. We had to look at what it could look like through the school year. And as, as Mrs. Whitlock pointed out, um, our director of curriculum Claudia Del Toro Anguiano came up with a model that's something we've not done before with extended day. We hope that we're going to see strong, a teacher interest in doing this to continue services for these children. Or maybe some of the children that couldn't come. And then look at what we can do going into the summer. So, um, we're just, this is really, uh, this is separate from the LCAP. But in many ways, it's connected to the data and some of the strategic planning we brought up to you with this comprehensive number of reports that you listened to prior to this.
And the numbers, I just wanted to add, we didn't, you know, that are, um, that are. And the numbers, I just wanted to add, we didn't, you know, that are, that are, that are attending, our students that are attending. Lois, we have two hundred and forty or fifty students at Valley Oaks, almost half. And I think Marango also.
Yeah, Marango and Valley Oaks are about close to fifty percent, yes.
And that is River Oaks is about two hundred and forty students. And then the other schools are a hundred and fifty to two hundred students, so it's not a small program.
So what's the total then, district-wide?
The total district-wide, I have.
I have it.
You have the total.
It's one thousand two hundred ninety-three. I think I had, I shared about thirteen hundred. I mean, I looked, I looked at that.
The spreadsheet, yeah.
Yeah, one thousand two hundred ninety-three, average about thirty-seven percent of our students district-wide at this point that are going. We also have preschool with ninety-nine children that are registered to come, close to a hundred students right now.
That is impressive.
Yeah, but it doesn't end by the summer. I mean, it's again, we want to do the best we can for a more normal and comprehensive school year program, but added supports, added supports for our children too. That's why it's incredible, it's incredible that we've gotten these emergency funds this level. And then what the governor's proposing, I hope, I hope that a lot of it sticks in the end. We'll see, because this roaring California economy, like what is it? I don't clearly, we're starting to say something.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, then if not, I'll move to approve item two zero two point two zero zero. And do I have a second to my motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Gracie.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number two zero two two zero zero, seconded by Grace Mollson, Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, on to item two zero two point two zero one. And that is board consideration of approval of agreement between Gulf County Elementary School District and Gulf Elementary Faculty Association, GFA, regarding compensation in class size.
Very good. All right, here we go. So again, we did reach an agreement with GFA, and it was ratified by GFA late last week. And I'm just gonna, I'm pleased to tell you that we were that far. And we arrived, we agreed to a two percent ongoing salary increase that would be retroactive back to July two thousand twenty. We also agreed upon a one-year pilot for a tiered class size overage compensation model. We already have a level of compensation for class size, but that was the area that we agreed to look at and try it out for one year. And and again, what also happens, which the initial letter from Dave Gordon in the county office I had shared with you is that when we reach an agreement and we're going to bring it to you, it's, we have to have review by the Sacramento County Office of Education. And Lois Yon, do you want to share about the public disclosure?
Sure. There's a process that we have to go through for all of the agreements for compensation that you'll see tonight to make sure that we have the budget to afford the compensation. And so that's what the following documents are, the spreadsheets. That's our fiscal team going in and showing what the compensation raise would do to our budget. And then at the very end of each public disclosure, you have to make sure that you have at least your three percent reserve. And so the county has approved all of them that we'll talk about tonight, that we will be able to maintain our three percent with the ongoing compensation that we're looking at.
That was mentioned in that page.
Yes. And we do, for the reserve levels that you see in these public disclosures, we do anticipate them to be higher when we bring you the adopted budget because the extra cola and some of the federal funds was not in this, in this budget. So we are anticipating, I know, by the time you get to the last public disclosure, we're down to three percent in twenty-two, twenty-three. With this latest May revise, we are anticipating that that would look a little bit better.
And so then, just to clarify, so then, in the past, we haven't really used a tiered system in terms of compensation?
It wasn't tiered, it was.
It was thresholds.
I think it was like a hundred fifty dollars.
Hundred fifty flat rate.
So it didn't really matter how many more after a certain point, it was really the same. This is incremental, which seems to be a lot more much. Great.
It is expensive though, for the district.
It is, it is. I mean, it's an expense. I I certainly understand it, but I, you know, I certainly see the logic behind it. Honestly, as somebody with ten kids, you know, I can tell you that, you know, there's certain levels. As you add, you know, children to the fold, it certainly, you know, it increases the challenges. So, you know, I could, I could, you know, I can certainly understand, you know, the logic behind this. And as long as we can afford to support it, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Well, all districts have something similar to that.
You know, not all districts.
When I was a teacher, I had, I had more than what was in my class.
Yeah.
I got compensated.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it incremental like this then, or was it just a flat rate?
No, it was, ours was incremental.
Okay.
Yeah, we were looking at different models. And I would say that most districts that we saw did do something. And and that's how we were looking for different models too. But this is the one that, you know, this is where we landed, and it is for one year. And it will be revisited.
And then we can revisit it here from now and see how well it works.
Yeah.
Get some feedback from both sides. All right. Anybody else? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point two zero one?
I'll make the motion to approve two zero two point two zero one.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cable to approve item number two zero two two zero one, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Tom Silva.
Aye.
Grace Mollson.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
And item, to item two zero two point two zero two. And is board consideration of approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one reopeners negotiations between CJ UESD and California School Employees Association and its Gulf chapter number three sixty, CSEA, regarding compensation, Article twenty-three Yard Supervisors and Continuation of Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty Four Negotiations.
Well, okay, so I was going to say, just our unions have worked very hard to work with management to make timely progress all along the way. And our classified union has worked with us. And we did reach, it is a tentative agreement, it is not a ratified agreement yet. And we're very hopeful that it will be ratified, but we want to bring this agreement for your consideration that will also need though to follow with CSC ratification. I'd like to start by pointing out that it is a two point five percent ongoing salary increase that's retroactive back to July one, two thousand twenty. The two point five salary increase really reflects alignment with the salary schedule for our classified staff because there are ranges that somewhat increase two point five percent. So that's why that made sense in terms of our classified, you know, what we can agree upon. And then Lois Yon, I thought I would turn this to you. If you could talk through why there are these nuances here for the yard supervisor, along with the additional days for instructional assistance.
So the yard supervisor, January first, two thousand twenty-one, we had to move all yard supervisors that were not at fourteen dollars an hour up to fourteen. And so at that time, we had not negotiated the impact of that. And so the salary schedule was just flat at fourteen dollars an hour at every range. And so what this does now is it starts at fourteen dollars an hour and then increases by two point five at each step up to step six. So it's more in line with our traditional salary schedule for CSCA. Instead of all yard supervisors making fourteen dollars an hour, no matter if you're year one or year six, now they see an increase each step. And then the the next one, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we are considering our group approval, increasing our instructional assistants and our bilingual instructional assistants by five workdays. So they would work five additional student days that would help bring services to the classroom through May.
I wanted to also point out that within the agreement on the second page, that, you know, this would close certain areas of our group with CSCA, but there are reopeners that we're continuing to work with CSCA on. In fact, we meet with them next Tuesday. And those reopener areas are related to hours and overtime, transportation, professional growth, and school social workers. So those areas are still areas that we can talk about, although we reached an agreement around compensation with our classified staff. Something also that Lois Yon brought up earlier, and I would like to repeat, is that with the changes in minimum wage, when, when, when you look at the salary schedules for our classified employees, there are many employees that are classified that we're going to have to relook at that salary schedule. And that we are committed, and Lois Yon had brought this up earlier, to work with a subcommittee with CSCA to work on that. So that is just something, that's why in some ways, this agreement somewhat maybe helps with that, with the cost, because it's starting to make some adjustments that, you know, need to be made, but but there's more work ahead. And then there's a lot of costs that are associated with that as well. But it is something that it's important to bring that up. The work is not over because we will have to address that. And I think, Lois, by before January or by January first?
Well, we want to have a new salary scheduled prior to January one because automatically we will be moving quite a few employees up to fifteen dollars an hour. And then just that, that parity, that equity of, you know, someone who's, you know, in a different classification now making fifty cents more than another classification because of, you know, it's just a trickle-down effect of minimum wage going up. What's reasonable, what can we afford? Everybody on that salary schedule is going to have to receive some kind of increase with the jump, this next jump to fifteen dollars.
Okay, any questions or concerns about that? If not, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point two zero two?
I'll make a motion for item number two zero two point two zero two.
Thank you, Casey. I'll second the item.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Reboy to approve item number two zero two two zero two, seconded by Tom Silva, Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Grace Mollson.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
And item two zero two point two zero three, board consideration of approval of unrepresented collective bargaining agreement regarding compensation.
Hey, so here are our final employee groups that we did recommend being board approval to provide a two percent, support a two percent salary increase for our school district, school district administrators, a two point five salary increase for school district supervisors and coordinators, and a two point five salary increase for our confidential employees. And then again, this also, this compensation increase does have a fiscal impact of over seventy-nine thousand dollars. It has been reviewed through the public disclosure process and has been approved by our county office. And so again, we recommend doing, we consider this for approval as well.
Okay. Again, no comment? If not, then I'll go ahead, I'll, I'll approve or move to approve. Item two zero two, I can't, I don't have my glasses. Yeah, I'll move to approve item two zero two point two zero three. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number two zero two two zero three, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Grace Mollson.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, on the item eight, are there any requests for public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, there are no requests for public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, pending agenda items, is there any discussion in terms of should or should not be on there?
Can we add?
Of course.
Okay. And I think that we need to review collectively as a board members and staff policies and procedures in regards to social media usage. Maybe social media policies.
Now, I know we've discussed in the past, you know, seeking out some training and guidance on social media. And of course, with the events of this last year, if that even is a resource, it's probably.
I think, and I I just may have, I may have tweaked the pending agenda items here. I have to just remember this, but I do think that when we spoke to Chris Kiner, that the thought is when there is the Brown Act session that the board would do, that Chris would be a part of that and integrate the social media aspect into it also. And I, I do, I get, I want you to know, I do pay attention to these pending items. And I, I would, I think I would say that perhaps the Brown Act along with the social media policy or that discussion before maybe the policies were done, that maybe that involves the new superintendent with you, especially with the Brown Act.
Okay.
And that could be maybe a priority, you know, for the, for us to work to set that up.
Okay.
It might be a good one to work together with the new superintendent. But I do believe that Chris Kiner had said that, that he, you know, he can help with that, not only the Brown Act, but the social media aspect. And the aspect of the policies, I think, again, we're going through, there's actually a consent calendar item. Right now, it, it, again, there are just, there are policies that we need to look at. And maybe again, CSCA has come out with something that's even more effective for for social media. But that's just a thought that I have because that is really important. It's really important.
I do apologize. I do have two requests for public comment.
Okay. Well, absolutely, now would give the time to hear them. Just go ahead and just have them.
Our first public comment is from Christie Swart Ward.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, okay, sorry, I thought I missed my chance. Okay, hi there. I seek to men and I to request in writing the exact plans our school board and superintendent will be following in the fall in regard to mass usage with children. I am asking for clear indications that our children indeed will not be required to wear a mask this fall and that anyone who wishes may. It was a parental choice that was one hundred percent taken away from the vast majority of parents in the state of California. We as parents were not given this right for our children. It is your duty as a board and superintendent to provide us this information to the public, the parents of the students, so then we can make an informed decision of the direction we wish to take for our children. It is unreasonable and not following science to continue forcing our children to wear a mask, and especially in the fall when the plan is to open full-time. For a child to wear a mask full-time, all day at school is torture. I implore you to follow the removal of the mask fall mandate for our children in school following California's removal of the mask mandate on June fifteenth. Honor the end of this statewide mask mandate. Let our children learn without complication. Let our children's mental health begin to recover. Let this be a parental choice and let them breathe. Please make this an agenda item. Please make this an agenda item of topic at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ward.
Our next public comment is from Sarah Murray.
Hello, everybody. Good evening.
Hello.
I'm pretty much following Chrissy, I guess. I was just wondering the same thing, if we could possibly have that as an agenda item for the June meeting, especially if the mandate is lifted June 15th by the governor. I would really like to see it happen even during summer school as it's going to be a very, very hot summer. But more so specifically for next school year. I really do feel it should be a personal choice, a family choice even. So I agree with Christie. I mean, it should be, it should definitely be on the list to talk about soon and not be procrastinated on for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comment on that. We never made a motion to enforce the mask, right? We've been, CDC, the state has required us to do that.
We're following.
Yeah. So I'm saying that June 15th, if the governor says, hey, no more masks, I think we don't wear masks anymore. I don't think it needs to be brought up.
But the children are unvaccinated. So indoors, unvaccinated people, the CDC is still going to recommend they wear a mask.
What, what we're understanding is that in mid-June, and hopefully before mid-June, we will get guidance about what that's going to mean for schools. There will be guidance for schools. We don't know what that will be, but there will be guidance.
So it will need to be an agenda item.
Yeah, I would say.
When that guidance comes out or is over.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will certainly be part of reports that we'll be reviewing. We all want to know the same, you know, the same answer.
And, and again, that, it also, as we're really working to, you know, watch and listen and work with, with public health on that, that, you know, that means that things could end up changing for the summer program also. But we don't have that guidance yet. We know that they're working on it.
No. And to, and to restate that, right, our current compliance is in compliance with the state and county safety guidelines, which are included in our school safety plan, which had to be approved in order for us to bring students back on campus.
Yeah.
So we're compliant currently and, you know, obviously we'll find out on the 15th of June what those changes, how they affect us. And of course, we will plan and react accordingly.
I know our, our middle school right now is preparing for three in-person promotion ceremonies and they're working very hard to, you know, follow, work within the guidance, which will reflect, you know, in person and not quite the way we've known it, but they're making it work and we're working within the guidance that we have to, to be able to do it.
And, you know, speaking of those promotions, I'm kind of looking forward to hearing from, from Mr. Raymer. I would like, you know, I mean, obviously it's three separate dates, but I would, I would hope that we get some invitations from, from Mr. Rayner to the board to be present and maybe we can coordinate amongst ourselves that he can cover all three of those dates.
I'll be there June 2nd.
I'll be there the 4th.
Okay.
Okay, Thursday.
That's great.
And all three of those dates. So, yeah, if Mr. Raymer could reach out to us, maybe we can, you know, or through your office.
And we'll work on that. I know that, I know that some of you are going to be there anyway. You know, certainly every board member who can come that would be wonderful for you to be there.
I have to follow on to that because, I mean, I know traditionally that, you know, McCaffrey has, you know, an award ceremony breakfast. Have they, have they had to forego that this year? Is it, is it not, it's just not possible or?
They, they are going to, they are going to integrate certain awards into, into the session. And I don't want to give it away right now, but they're, they're going to do that as part of, of the promotion ceremony each day. They also have a fourth one, a virtual, a virtual one as well. But they have, you know, again, I, I just don't want to give it away because I, but I do, I do know that they have some, a way of integrating that into the promotion ceremonies.
Okay.
And I just have to give a shout out because I know all of our, just all of our school administrators are working so hard to, you know, do amazing things for the end of school. The, our middle school administrators, they are recruiting summer school for seventh and eighth graders and doing three in-person and one virtual promotion next week. So.
Yeah.
They are working so hard. Every time I had to run in the office, they're just running around, trying to do the best they can. And that's a lot, you know, through promotion.
Oh, that really is.
And.
That's just some really creative thinking there to make that work.
It could have been, it could have been the model that we used last year, which was they, it was outstanding. Oh, a promoted. But again, there was the option to do it in person, not the same way in the past, but the school has worked to make that happen. So there are many middle schools that are doing the drive-through process again. They are, McCaffrey Middle School could have done that also. But they elected to do it this way based on feedback and what the children were at, what our youth were asking for and, and family as well.
Quiet.
Yes. Mr. Ron Raymer would like to address the board.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I called him out.
Speaking of Mr. Raymer.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Raymer.
Hello.
Okay, so for promotion this year, yes, what Dr. Shower said is exactly correct. When I pulled the kids in form, only they, the vast majority wanted something in person. So that's was a couple of months ago and that's when this all started. You should have received a document that the kids brought home. You signed, sent back. They drew a number. They were given a section for you to sit. It was embossed as a form of validation and then returned home. So you should have all the information along with all calls and emails that have gone home explaining what we're doing on promotion. So I hope everybody has received that. The, the, what the, as far as the award ceremony, it's not really a secret. The, if the students receive top dog first and second trimester, then at, as they line up for promotion, we're going to present them with the medallions and then they'll wear them out. The kids will all be wearing their promotion T-shirts and a mask that was custom-made for them that you provided, we provided as a district with no cost to the parents. So we weren't able to get gowns and things like we normally do because of time, but they all, they all have their class T-shirt and a mask that they're going to wear. And so you will see, and I will recognize those students with the medallions around their neck. It was really difficult when I met with the eighth grade teachers to try to come up with awards because some kids, they had not seen, they were in glee. It was just, it just was, there wasn't a fair way of doing it. So we just opted to go and give out, we gave almost 100 medallions out, or we will give almost 100 medallions out. So there are three ceremonies. Well, there's four. There's a virtual on Tuesday and then the hail team on Wednesday, the heat on Thursday, and the inferno on Friday. The virtual ceremony is about, for about 30 students and it'll be at 11 o'clock. And then the in-person ceremonies are at 8:30 in the morning. And the three days. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of information. It's going to be very strict. The guidelines we're following, they have to have the ticket to get into the gate. If they don't, they're not going to, they're going to be turned back. So it will be interesting, but that's what the guidelines say we have to do. So any questions that I can maybe answer for you?
No, I think you just did.
All right. Great. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much for everything you and others are doing. Thank you.
Oh, much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else quiet?
No.
That's it? All right. Okay. If not, what?
I don't know if this needs to be an agenda item, but it was something that kind of popped in my head thinking about next year. Do we maybe over summer advertise for substitutes? I know we had a lot of retirements and, you know, kind of anticipating possibly a shortage. Is that something that maybe we could advertise? You know, what the requirements are to be a sub because I'm not sure everyone. There may be some parents out there and grandparents that are qualified that maybe don't realize it.
Yes. And then we've had a few parents that have found out what it takes and they are now subbing the system. So we can definitely send out something to them.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, then if not, this meeting is now adjourned.